...Commissioner's Court of Grimes County. The date is Wednesday, February the 6th. It is February 6th, 2019. It is 9:00 a.m. I would ask that you please stand for the invitation and pledges to the U.S. and Texas flag. Shall we pray? Father, we thank you for this day, dear God, and for the blessings of this life. We thank you for this nation in which we live, this state in which we live, and this county in which we live. Father, we would pray that you give guidance and wisdom to the leadership of our county, our state, and our nation. Let us be of one mind as a people. Let us work together to make life better for each and every one. Father, we would ask that you give us the strength, the energy, and the perseverance that we need to overcome the difficult issues. Father, help us to enjoy the fun times with one another. And we just thank you for the blessings of this life. It's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored with Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. We'll go to Agenda Item Number Two and ask for public comments. We look forward to hearing from anybody. We would ask that if you have something to say, please come to the podium, identify yourself, and if you can, limit your comments to two minutes, please. Not all at once form a line. Well, I'm gonna make a public comment. I was in Judge's Conference, or not Conference, Judge's School last week, and we talked about ethics and things of that sort. And I know that I have made this comment before in other meetings, but I want to make sure that it gets on an agenda record, that I do have an acquaintance with Enterprise Systems, which is a company that Grimes County, over the last year, two, three years, has done business with, our telecommunications system. The president of the company is a gentleman by the name of Rodney Hyde, and I go to church with him on Sundays and Wednesdays. He's been to my home. He's never invited me to his home. I'll talk to him about that. But I did want to get it on the record that I do go to church with the president of that company and one of his salesmen, a fellow by the name of Tommy Hagerty. So if we make sure that gets into the public comments, my conscience is clear. Mr. Peter?
No.
Oh. Well, I thought you were making public comments.
I'm trying to escape.
He's excited. He's going on vacation tomorrow. Any other public comments? Hearing done, seeing them, we'll go to Consent Agenda Items Number Three, Four, Five, and Six. That will be Consider and Take Action to Approve the Treasurer's List of Claims and Bills. Consider and Take Action to Approve Payroll. Receive and Approve the Grimes County Fourth Quarter Investment Report for the period ending December 31, 2018. Page four of this agenda. Consider and Take Action to Approve Budget Line Amendments and/or Line Item Transfers. Commissioners, we've had this information for a period of time. Are there any comments or questions regarding any of the above?
If not, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items Three, Four, Five, and Six.
Second. There's a motion before the court in regards to Agenda Items Three, Four, Five, and Six by Commissioner Dobieinsky, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We will go to Agenda Item Number Seven. Commissioner Dobieinsky, Precinct Two, Consider and Recognize a Fallowing Grimes County Employee for Years of Service. Blake Jarvis, 20 years of service. Mr. Constable Jarvis?
In 2017, we started this program in October, and this year, we're starting giving flags for 20, 25, 30 years of service. It's my pleasure to present to one of my former students.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's my understanding that Constable Jarvis had a congratulatory party that most of us weren't invited to, so I would just remind him, as an elected official, he might want to throw a makeup party. Congratulations, Blake.
Thank you, Judge.
Well done.
Thank you.
We'll go to Agenda Item Number Eight. Commissioner Cox, Discuss and Take Action to Assist the City of Navasota with a Corps of Engineers Drainage Study. Commissioner Cox?
Yes, sir. So this is an item that we briefly alluded to in the buzzing process. It's a study that's been going on, or at least a project that the City of Navasota's been working on for several years to get the Corps of Engineers involved in what they term hydrology or drainage study, to assist with some of the water flooding issues in and around Navasota, specifically the negative impact that the flooding has out in the industrial park, as well as some of the residences in Navasota. I asked Brad Stafford, Navasota City Manager, to come and assist, and maybe he can enlighten the court a little more on what the status of the project is. But it's a very needed project. It does have an economic development component to it because currently, the only place or the biggest place in Navasota for industry is out in the industrial park. And when that floods, it presents a problem for the whole county because we have businesses out there that employ people that live, may not live in that immediate vicinity, but live throughout the county. So they have a problem either getting to work or getting home from work, and it creates some safety issues with regard to flooding. Brad, if it pleases the court, Brad is here to kind of lighten us on the status of the program, cause.
And I'd just like to say that I've been in a meeting with Commissioner Walker and Brad in regards to this. I believe you were there, weren't you, Commissioner?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And one of the issues that I think we as a court need to be aware of, regardless of what we decide, is if they solve their drainage problem, they're gonna solve it by sending the water into Grimes County. So this is a partnership, in my opinion, of how we take a look at this project. It's not just Navasota. It's all of us in the Grimes County area. With that, Mr. Stafford?
Thanks, Judge. And that's correct. Of course, we're trying to get it over to Brazos and Washington County as quick as we can, so that it gets out of here. But where's the media? Don't publish it.
They're behind.
Yeah, I know that. But what has happened is, for the last five years, the city's been working with Army Corps of Engineers to assist us with some drainage issues that we've got coming through town. And most everybody here knows, because it's been publicized for the last 10 years, that downtown floods, that the industrial park floods, that a lot of our residential neighborhoods have high water every time we get just about any type of heavy rains. So as we started the process to go through a study with the Corps of Engineers, we tried to get on, to tie on to the Brazos River Authority's hydraulic and hydrology study, and could not get connected to that one. So they came in and started their own study for us. We have been approved finally, after four and a half years. They finally approved it through the federal government to fund it. But with that, we have to come up with a 50% match. The project for this study is a $544,000, $544,500 study. So we've gotta come up with 50%, or $272,250. This study, everybody says, well, what's a study gonna do for us? Well, it will determine the solutions to help mitigate flooding in and around the creeks in Navasota. Once that occurs, then it helps them to identify federal projects where we could get federal investment that has a certain cost-benefit ratio between us and the citizens, where we could enter into some design and construction projects with the Army Corps of Engineers. So this little bit of money may turn into a larger pot of money once we get the study completed. You know, there's no way to say it will, but I don't believe that the Corps of Engineers would have jumped and tackled this project if they didn't think that there was going to be more that they could do to assist the citizens of Grimes County and Navasota with flooding. So with that said, the city, to get this thing kicked off, because you all know that the federal government and the way they budget and the things that have been occurring over the last several months, they needed to get started, or our money was going to get reallocated. So the city has already committed $70,000. We've, I don't remember, did we send the check yet? We're getting ready to send the check of $70,000 to get this thing kicked off, because we don't want them to reallocate the funds to another project. So what we're here to ask today, because this affects Grimes County, because Navasota is in Grimes County, but also your citizens and your, you have a large tax base that's affected by this flood. I told three of you, I would love for you to pay for all of it. I understand that's not realistic. But I would start with asking for a 50-50 match between the city and the county of that, so about $136,125. It's a lot of money. It's an unexpected, you know, cost. We did expect to have some costs. We are hoping to use our allocation for Hurricane Harvey recovery money to cover our portion. You all know that's not a large portion of money that we're scheduled to get from Hurricane Harvey recovery, so it'll just cover a portion of that $272,000. So just like to ask that, and I will answer any questions that you guys have.
I'd like to say add on to that. Now, this study's gonna be of Seale Creek, and what's the other creek's name?
Sandy Creek.
Sandy Creek. And Sandy Creek kind of dumps into our industrial park. And I get numerous calls from Evolution and the different businesses out there that they're having to close down because they can't get the workers in safely. And one of the biggest concerns for me is, we also have a trailer park out there that's called Shady Oaks, and I know it has over 100 residents. And that's frightening to me when you see pictures on the newspaper of them carrying their groceries or whatever on top of their heads, trying to get home. And sometimes they're out of their homes for hours on end. And so they're gonna try to get home to their families. And to me, that's, could be a life or death situation. And we talked about this back during the budget process, but we did not have a firm number from you all, and it was suggested that we come back to the table to discuss this, once you got a firm number. I heard you say 100 and, did you say 25? What did you say?
136, 125.
136, 125? Okay. And is that needed immediately?
The sooner the better, because, like I said, we committed the 70 right now, so we, so they wouldn't reallocate the funds. And he said that would, that would save the funds, but then we need to go ahead and get that to them within a few months. I mean, they're gonna start with that 70. And he said, within a few months, they would have, they would be to the next phase, and when they get to that next phase, they need our match for sure.
Okay, so it's gonna take them a few months to do the study to determine if...
To do the beginning part of that study that makes, that determines whether they go further. Now, here, here's the other aspect of this. With that 70,000, which is a total of 140,000, they will begin this process. And what it does is, it actually gives them the idea of whether they should move forward or not. Because if they determine that it won't be feasible for future projects, they're gonna stop there, and we won't be out any more money.
Okay.
We'll only be out the first little bit of money. So the good part is, they're gonna work with us, because they understand our budgeting process, the federal government's process, and where the funds come from. You know, these, these funds are still all taxpayer funds, regardless of whether it's federal funds, or city funds, or county funds. So they, they do have a good understanding of that, and they're gonna, they're, you know, they're gonna be as conservative as they can.
And that's what's where I was trying to get, because I thought I understood you to say, they, this first set of money, the 140, would determine if they would move forward, if they see the need, which I hope they see the need.
Where we would have the need to pay the rest of the $200,000, basically.
Okay, okay.
Once they, once they do the study, and they determine the work to be done, who then is going to be on the hook for the work?
The way I understand it is, then we would qualify for federal assistance to do these projects. As you know, we're probably gonna have more matching funds, but the federal funds would, you know, it'd be a minimum of 50% of whatever those projects would be. And most of you know, I know these two know for sure, because they've driven it, but both of those creeks have multiple issues when it comes to getting water out of our community and onto the river. Because that's where they all tie in. They all tie back into the Navasota River and then into the Brazos River. We've gotta get that water back into that river as quick as we can.
Of course, once the Navasota River backs up like it has over the last six, eight, 12 weeks, then it just comes back up to us. And I'm not trying to say this is not a good endeavor or worthless endeavor, just that, you know, one of the additional, we joke, I jokingly said, Navasota gets it out of your area into Grimes County, and in Grimes County, we're anxious to get it to the river. But, you know, once it hits the river, if the river's full, then there's no place for that water to go.
Well, and the advantage is, the Brazos River Authority is doing their own study.
Okay.
And so hopefully, all of this can tie together, and if there's projects to get water further down, you know, back to the coast, because that's where it's all headed.
When you say Brazos River Authority, is that tied to the Corps of Engineers?
Yes. The Corps is doing that as well.
Okay, so they are tied together.
Also, some of the challenges, we worked out in the industrial park. Road and bridge has been working for the last few years, trying to get the water out of there. But the challenge out there is the spurs that you have off the train tracks tend to create a...
Dams.
A dam for, for those businesses. And we've just got to try to get some help to try to figure out how we can work around that. We've had help from Elwood, who's come in and put in additional drainage to try to help take it out of there, and it's just not working. So we really need the help of the Corps.
Yeah, and we're never going to eliminate it. I mean, that, I want to make sure that everybody knows, just because we do all of this, it's not going to eliminate flooding. It will reduce the possibility of some flooding, and it'll help take some of our properties out of that flood zone. You know, they probably technically won't be removed from the floodplain, but at least it helps them to get the water off of them.
Yeah, the studies can do, can be utilized to change where it's flooding, you know, non-populated areas or businesses, and just an open field, it will comp, probably flood versus that, so.
And one of the things that we've been talking about specifically here in the county, a component of some of the decision-making that we, we've been considering, is the anticipated growth or possible growth. And in order to better attract the type of businesses that we need and residents, it's very difficult for somebody considering those big purchases to want to, to invest in an area that has very little control over how the water flows to the area and potential for devastating floods to their business or their homes. If, in fact, this study can point out ways to mitigate that, that situation, it would certainly be beneficial to not only the residents of Navasota, but to the county as a whole.
Also, I want to say on that, you talked about economic development, and we have jobs, or businesses that want to come here, and that bring quality jobs with high caliber paying jobs to our area. But some of the hindrances in that is that work, and they locate, and where there's property available, that's where the water's headed. So with 249 coming in, it's better for us to be proactive than to be behind the ball once businesses get here, because I think, if I make no mistake, that is the only industrial business park in the county. And we're advertising it on our economic development website, and we just want to be prepared when those businesses decide to come to Texas or move to our area. We just recently had a world headquarters relocate here, HTRI, which is in the business park. But this is your industrial park, and we've been approached by a lot of big companies lately that want to come, you know. So my question is, at this particular time, are you asking for a portion of the 272, or are you asking for a portion of the 70? I'm just trying to...
I'm asking for the portion of the 272, 250. Because if I've got that commitment, it makes it much easier. I'm not asking you to write a check for that. I mean, what, what I would say is, if you approved that, then if it would be okay with y'all, we would, Lance could just invoice you as we are invoiced for 50% every time we go, or whatever percentage y'all discern determine. That way, you're only out at the time of, of need, but you're also only out if they stop in the middle of this thing, because we don't, I mean, it's, it is the federal government. You don't know what could happen. So you're not gonna be out that money, and we don't want to hold on to your money. I mean, we would, we can hold on to it and draw interest if you like, but...
Do you have any idea, and I know when we're talking about government projects, the sky's the limit, but do you have any idea how long the 70,000 is gonna hold, hold them?
It'll, it'll be a couple of months. I mean, they didn't give me an exact date. They just said a couple of minutes. Wouldn't it, like, two months or so, that gets them started, gets a lot of it going?
Okay.
And then helps them to make a determination if they need to go to the next step and get a little more money.
And then if they decide not to go to the next step, then all bets are off?
You wouldn't be out anything.
So it's 136, 125?
Right. And what I would ask for, if you did agree to do that, that you split the first 70 with us, which would be 35,000, that'd be the kickoff to get it going.
I can cover the 125, can I cover the 136,000? I'd like to ask our auditor, other than fund balances, are you aware of $136,000 kind of sitting around? In the opinion of our auditor, if we approve this, does it fall in line with unforeseen emergency?
I think it would, just because we have been having problems. We've not had anybody offer to try to come up with a solution for us. And so with the Corps of Engineers working on it, they're working to figure out a solution for us, so I think that would qualify.
Mr. Lilly? David Lilly? Some of the grant money that we've applied for on flood mitigation and those kind of things, are you aware, or do you think any of those grant funds might be applicable to this?
No, sir, because all the projects that we've submitted for the ones that have been approved, 2015 and now 2016, and the projects we're submitting and waiting for word on for Harvey, 2017, are all for specific locations on county roads where we're trying to mitigate actual flooding issues on those roads and those locations.
Do you know whether 420 or 418, Lynx Road, any of those fall within that gap?
I don't remember off the top of my head, Commissioner. Eric can talk better to that, if he was here, but I could find out for you.
Okay, thank you.
So Judge, one of the, one of the advantages of us participating in this particular project is that it demonstrates a collaboration between two governmental entities, which I think probably puts us in a better position going forward for possible additional funds, because I know that's one of the, the things that the decision-makers like to see.
Totally agree.
And it lessens the burden from one entity to the other when we pull together to get it. Mr. Fulton, you looked like...
I looked like what?
Like you wanted to say something, was it?
Well, we all love Mr. Stafford to death, but you probably want to see this in writing before you commit 250,000 or whatever it is to the things that have been represented orally to him. So I assume, okay, I haven't seen anything, so I assume that the court will want time to review that, to know it's a significant contribution, and you need to know in black and white what the expectations are. Not that the information shared with Mr. Stafford is incorrect, but if you have a lack of continuity between the guy that was on the phone talking to Mr. Stafford and the next guy, the next guy may be under some different impression of what the 70 goes to, you know, what's gonna happen, what the study's gonna provide to you, what may be done after the study, all of those things, what the timeline is, all of those things, obviously, you will want to see, I think, in writing before you commit to the dollar.
Mr. Stafford did provide me just now the, some of the stuff, and I'll pass it to you, Judge.
One, one of the things that I might say is, the, we actually had asked representatives from the Corps of Engineers to be here today, however, their, their whole group was in a mandatory meeting that they had to be in. He said after February 4th, if commissioners would like for him to attend court meeting, he would be glad to come and visit with you guys as well. It's the guy that we've been dealing with for the majority of this project, and he comes out of Fort Worth. So if you guys would like that to occur, if you'll let me know, I will get him here.
And I would just say, there's no reason to not have confidence in Mr. Stafford, but you're committing a significant amount of dollars, and you better have done your homework to be able to justify that to your constituents. While, you know, the project certainly seems worthwhile, you need to know what all the details are for yourself.
I agree.
I think that the county attorney likes to aggravate the city manager.
Funny that we only see Mr. Stafford and he wants money.
I knew that was coming, I knew it was coming, so. Anyway, no, he's right, and we will provide whatever you guys need. And if, you know, if the county attorney needs, if you want me to email you some of this stuff, I would, I'll do that, too.
I would ask that you email all of it to him.
To him, or to all of you?
To him, and we can get copies of, of this given to all of the commissioners.
Sure, I'll, I'll do that. And if you want the court to show up, I'll get that done, too.
Are you willing to leave this with us?
I made that for y'all.
Okay, because it's got blue ink signatures, so I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, it's just that we printed, I printed it in color. Don't tell Lance.
I guess that, I've got a question. I mean, is this something that the court is willing to, to entertain further discussion on, or is it...
Well, you could, you could make a motion on us potentially approving to collaborate to financially work with Navasota, with the understanding that once the contract and terms have been reviewed by the county attorney and the commissioners, then we bring it back to a vote. But, you know, if we don't want to do it, now's a good time to tell the city of Navasota no. But if we're considering it, then I think we could put something on the table for us to consider, in my opinion.
I have a question before you do that, too. Would, would you prefer that we create an agreement between the two entities as well? Were you, maybe you and Carrie could work together for a written agreement between the two entities?
If, if many of the folks in this room that are participating in this were wiped out, could the next folks piece together what had been done? And that's always the question, is you want to meet the expectations of the parties. In this case, Corps of Engineers did the grant process, once their expectations met about what commitment of money from the two individuals. But you guys have talked about different contribution levels, et cetera, and certainly, it wouldn't be a bad idea that we have something in place between the two of them.
So our designated survival would be the written contract?
Yeah. Well, and if that's what you guys would like to do, I can always have our legal counsel work with yours, and we can solve. They, they work together on a lot of projects, so.
I'm sure he's got an eralocal in his back pocket.
Judge, I'd make a motion that we continue this discussion at a later day, tenetally pending... be pending review of agreements and contracts approved by the county attorney and the commissioners' court, that we tend to be consider a contribution toward the Corps, Corps of Engineers hydrology study in conjunction with the city of Navasota.
And Judge, if the question's about the time needed for me to review, next Wednesday is fine by me, if you guys want to set it there. That soon, it sounds like the, you know, the commitment needs to be made pretty quickly, if it's going to be made.
Can we bring the Corps of Engineer in next Wednesday?
What's next Wednesday? What day is that?
It'll be the 13th.
Yeah, we should be able to. He said anytime after the 4th, he was going to be available. Well, not after the 4th, after today. He said the 4th was when they started their meeting.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do my best to get him here next Wednesday.
Okay. But between now and next Wednesday, we have the commitment from the county's attorney that he can help or prepare...
He's putting pressure on our, our city attorney.
Well, that's okay.
No, I, I agree, that's fine.
And it's fine by me if you want to stick it, if you want to move it further off. I, I just didn't want you guys to perceive that I was going to need two weeks or four weeks or whatever.
Next week's a regular meeting, and I prefer to...
If you can do that, if, if it's okay with y'all, I'll try to get the court here. And Lance may have to attend in my place, because I have multiple meetings on, in that morning.
Commission? Oh, you're second, okay.
But I also want to say that, that agreement is an agreement between the city of Navasota and the Army Corps of Engineers. So you, just understanding from my understanding, you're going to be working on agreement between the city of Navasota and Grimes County.
Right, but we need to see that, to see why, why, what you can expect to get from the dollars that you contribute if you choose to do that. And then I understand Mr. Bobby and I are going to be left to work out an agreement between the city and the county.
Okay.
Do our record keepers understand the motion? Okay. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number eight by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Oh, is there any discussion? Everybody has a pretty good understanding of the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Go to agenda item number nine, emergency management coordinator David Lilly, consider and take action to approve a budget amendment to cover payments not to exceed a total of $32,000 to Texas Communications for installation of mobile radios in the Anderson, Shiro, Plannersville, Richards, Whitehall, Iola, Bedeys, and Todd Mission Fire Department Response Apparatus. See attachment number nine. And attachment number nine is a listing of the fire departments, the number of vehicles, and the approximate costs.
The bottom four are approximate.
And the others are done.
The other ones are already committed.
I'll let you explain, sir.
Yes, Judge, commissioners, as we discussed at the last commissioners' court, this, actually it was two weeks ago, if I remember right, because I wasn't at the last meeting.
Twenty-third.
Yes, ma'am. This is a expense that, to cover the cost of installing, and it should have said 700, 800 radios, I left that part out, but for the new system that we are installing and have installed in Anderson, to allow the fire departments to communicate both with the rolling fire within the county and outside the county, but also with their fire department counterparts in the other counties that are using 700, 800 trunking communications. And this is a, like I said, on your cost breakout, it shows what already has been committed for the first four departments. And then I requested Texas Communications hold any subsequent installations until we resolve this issue of approving the payment.
And the 32,000 comes from where?
Well, that's, that's the million dollar question. I did not have this in my budget. At the time when I made this commitment, and it was a commitment to, and I discussed this with the fire chiefs, I believe, in the summer, I don't remember which month it was, but one of the fire chiefs meetings, I explained to them what we were needing to do. We had the equipment already on standby, the mobile radios. These were all passed down to us through the city of Bryan, the city of College Station of Police Departments. And the COG took control of these radios, refurbished them, and then provided them to us at, I think it was basically, you know, a token cost of $1. There had to be some kind of exchange for the cost. But basically, they were provided to us free of charge. And when I made this commitment, I explained to the fire chiefs that the initial installation cost would not be on the fire departments. And I felt that it was critical that we get this done as soon as possible, because again, the police departments and the sheriff's department are already using these radios, and they're, they're partners in the other counties, particularly Montgomery County, Washington County, Brazos County are all using this system. And they needed this capability when they respond to joint fire events, especially across, if they go cross into the other counties. And at the time when I did this, I, first off, I'll be honest, I did not really have an idea of just how much this would cost. I was thinking at the time that my standard line item for radio maintenance would probably be enough to cover this. Obviously, that was not true. But as we discussed, Judge, last month, I had a line item under special projects of 40,000. And at the time, I was thinking, well, that'd be more than enough to cover this. And again, that was my mistake. That money was already allocated for something totally different. So that's why I'm now here today asking for a special budget amendment to cover this.
That 40,000 for special projects that you had, you said it's already allocated, is that money going to be spent?
It's already spent.
It's already spent?
Yes, sir. That was actually to cover the shortfall, and it wasn't really a shortfall. There was, if you remember, our VHF project that they, that we had already approved, we had to take a portion of that to pay for the replacement of the microwave antennas. And that 40,000 was, it was intended to replace that amount that we had to spend last year for the microwaves, to cover the, the cost of the upgrade of the North Tower site in Key.
We have, we have Richards Fire Department, we have Shiro Fire Department, is that right?
Whitehall.
Whitehall. So chiefs, you both have had them installed in your vehicles, correct?
Correct.
How beneficial, in your opinion, is it to have those in your vehicles at this time?
Right, now they say out of range.
So it's no benefit?
Right.
That's for Bedeys. What about Whitehall?
For our department, we're not out of range. We've had upgrades to the VHF system, which has helped some of the dead spots in our area. It improves interoperability between the fire department and the sheriff's department. And Purdue provides interoperability and communication with the dispatch center. The primary thing is, is it gives a clear channel. And we don't have a lot of the static and the back noise that we would have on the VHF system before the VHF was upgraded. In the long term and in the long run, if the 700, 800 system is, is countywide operable, it'll be available to all the departments, and all the departments will be able to operate on it. Because they will not only be operating off of our one 700, 800 tower, they will be using towers off of the adjacent counties that surround the area. When you go into a trunking system, all the parts are connected. So that we have towers that may be in Walker County or Madison County, or in Brazos County, that we're closer to. It's like a cell tower. The closest tower picks up the call and routes it through the system. The way trunking works is when you key the mic, you're literally asking the system for a frequency to talk on. And if that frequency is available, it will give you a positive response, which is a double beep.
Sure.
When you hear that double beep, you can start talking. If you don't get a positive response, you'll hear a rrr noise, which means you don't have a frequency to speak on. Wait a second and try again. It, it makes, it makes for a more community-wide functioning system.
Well, that's what we're trying for. But it is operational within your department.
It is operational within our department.
But where out of bounds into Bedeys?
Richards.
I mean, Richards?
I have to leave town. I have to get on the hill for it to pick up a tower.
And it's also possible that, we will know more once we get this completed, but the issues with Richards, obviously, it's also going to be faced by Bedeys when they get these installed. We do have a grant that is just waiting. We have the equipment already on standby for the Bedeys Tower site, that we'll be installing the same type of equipment we put at Anderson. And once, we're just waiting for the power to be installed.
That should help Richards?
I would think so, but that's one of the things that Thomas Gilbert with the COG, he's the BBWAX administrator and program manager, he will do a propagation study once we get everything up and running to determine where there's any gaps, so we can, you know, use that for future planning and figure out where we need to possibly add more equipment. So, but I, I would anticipate it should help alleviate a lot of those issues once we get that, that tower up in operation.
So the money we approved today on the, on the 7,300 and something, that's for the, the power to be installed at the Bedeys Tower?
Yes.
But it will be reimbursed because we, you have a grant that...
No, that's, that's actually, it's a separate grant. The, the money that you approved today to install the power is going to be reimbursed out of the COG grant that they used to build all these tower sites in all the counties. So it's separate from my grant. My grant is a Homeland Security grant that I obtained last year, and it's to pay for installing the six-pack itself.
Okay, so you have two grants that you...
I have one, and the COG's handling the other, yes, ma'am. But yeah, there are two separate grants. And like you said, that's 72, 7287 will be reimbursed once we get the power installed.
And that's not the Homeland Security grant, that's the BBWAX grant?
No, but my grant is Homeland Security grant.
No, the money we're talking about, the $7,287?
Is the BBWAX, or BBCOG grant. And it's actually a Hurricane Ike source. It came out of Hurricane Ike money.
And the additional grant from Homeland Security is to complete the same tower?
Is to add our component to the tower. The tower will be complete once the power is installed. So BBCOG will be able to close out their grant once that's completed. But then we step up and start our phase of the project where we install our own equipment. That becomes our tower asset at, at that point. In fact, for all intents and purposes, that tower site is ours now. You know, with the exception of the land, of course, which still belongs to the city of Bedeys.
So I know there was a discussion about an addendum to the current agreement with the fire departments. Has that been completed?
I passed the wording over to John's office. We have not had a chance to discuss it yet, but I provided him with the basic wording that was requested on how to revise that to reflect the, the addition of the 7, 800 radios, and the fact that those radios are county assets as a BBWAX member, and that the, the cost of maintenance would be taken up by the fire departments if there was any maintenance that needed to be done after the installation.
And Commissioner, we've made the change to the form, but as you recall, this is a yearly or annual event where the association gets contracts from every department. We have not sought the signatures of every department to that modification, if that's the question.
May I ask you what understanding did you give the fire departments in reference to maintenance and repair? Was there any discussion of that?
We just talked about that, and I explained to them that the procurement of the radios was basically, you know, again, we were granted those radios, so there was really no cost to that. And the membership, what we call the membership fee to have the radios on BBWAX would be absorbed by the county, carried by the county. And the installation itself would be putted by the county, but in subsequent repair, replacement if necessary, would fall to the fire departments if it became necessary.
Much like, until he recognizes you, Mr. Victor, much like Mr. Fultz saying we're in the middle of a contract already with the fire department. I'm concerned that changing a contract in the middle of the process could create havoc, because...
It could. You could always obtain an amendment, just require the participation, somebody to walk around each of the nine departments, or however many there are, eight departments, whatever it is, and ask them to sign an amendment, so there's clarity about who owns the equipment, what, who's going to maintain the equipment, when, if the equipment's returned. Those kind of things won't be known, or it can be oral representations, but obviously, I'm not going to, I don't think you would be comfortable with that. And so there needs to be an expectation level from all parties as to what's going to happen with that equipment. We could do that, maybe contract, you can do amendment in the middle of a contract anytime, essentially, but just it's going to require somebody to do the legwork to get it done.
Now, was the equipment given to Grimes County, was it for the volunteer fire departments? It just came through via...
Yeah, but, yes, the understanding was that these would be provided, we requested enough radios to be able to equip all of our sheriff's deputies, all of our constables, and all the fire departments. So the initial number that was allocated...
So the sheriff's departments, radios, y'all got those through BBWAX, sir?
Yes.
And they were allocated to your department? They didn't come through his department to get to your department, did?
All the radios were allocated from BBCOG to us.
To, to you all?
Well, to Grimes County.
To Grimes County?
Yeah, and, and it was good. They took them with us. They had, they requested numbers from all the departments, how many radios you needed. All the departments submitted. I submitted mine directly to them, the fire departments submitted theirs to Mr. Lilly. The radio manager took that with us, assigned the radios out to everybody, and they, the repair shop went through the radios, and then as agencies went up, they were installed in vehicles.
So how many radios are we actually talking about was received for the volunteer fire department?
It's over 50.
Yeah. Yeah, you have your...
And keep in mind, too, when you talk about these radios in the discussion, these aren't new radios. These are radios that were being decommissioned out of another department, you know, because they are getting aged and stuff. So what we're seeing is there are some issues with some radios we are having. We are having to replace some parts and stuff now. Luckily, the COG has still a case of them, and we should have interchange some parts. But as I'm moving forward, I'm moving forward to buy newer radios to replace some of the old ones, because they're not going to stay in 10 years, you know? They're already close to that level, so we need to recognize that and look forward as, as we talk about this maintenance and stuff, that we're going to need to put in replacement costs on these radios versus thinking that they're going to stay like if we bought a brand new radio, this could be a 10-year, you know, lifespan of that radio.
It's already had some life used, so it may be on the last leg, some of it.
And when you look at these new radios compared to the old ones, the clarity, the audio, and the programming features and stuff are a vast difference, you know? The newer ones are coming where you can over-air program them. These old ones, you can't do that. So when you have to reprogram, you got to take the whole case of them, run them up and get them programmed, you know, instead of the way some of the newer stuff is. So that's just something that's always going in the future about radio systems.
So what, you said 50, I, I counted 57 radios, but don't they also have handheld?
Yes, two per department.
Two per department, so...
I believe, didn't know that's six. We have seven.
Okay.
Seven, seven per department? I mean, I'm trying to understand.
Our department has seven. Handhelds.
Handhelds, yes, like these.
I, I understand what they are, I'm trying to get to a number.
Five vehicles, for a total of 12.
Okay, 12 for your department.
Total.
We're showing six.
I'm lost.
We have...
These are vehicles.
Seven of these, and we have six mounted in the truck that don't look like this. They're hard mounted to the truck, you can't take them out.
The number I'm trying to get from Mr. Lilly is how many of those, if we're paying the fees on them, how many of those are countywide? Handhelds? That's what I'm trying to get, because we're paying a monthly fee.
Pay a monthly fee on all of the seven...
Of all radios, so...
Regardless of where they're mounted, or who... Regardless of where they're mounted or who they're issued to.
And that's what I'm trying to get to. What number are we looking at as far as the BBWAX maintenance system fee?
I don't have that number off the top of my head, ma'am.
Because that's a number that's going to be perpetual. If we're going to go into this, this is something we need to start looking at.
We're actually conducting an audit right now. Every year, the way they do the budget each year, the agencies conduct an audit on all the radios out, and then if they notice the radios that aren't being used and stuff, they have the option to take those off the system once a year. So that audit actually has to be submitted by the end of this month. And then, so we'll have, and that's the number that's used for the budget. After after year, when you add or decrease radios, it's just not going to affect your budget, so it's just once a year, it's taken, here's the audit shot for all the radios, and then they set the next year's budget on that.
But we budget for BBWAX maintenance fee, right, through 424, Department 424, and that's the number we need to know in the future, once you all receive the audit, because we need to talk about that during the budgeting process, so that we don't have a shortfall if radios are out. We need to know what's out and the number that we're budgeting for.
Yep, the maintenance fee, that basically, that membership fee that we pay for the radios that goes to BBWAX, that's also called a maintenance fee. That is to pay for any maintenance on the system, not on the individual radios. It does not cover maintenance on the radios.
Once again, that number will be important, because you won't run short, okay? You won't get into a negative situation if we know, because if you've allocated more radios than what we anticipate, then we're going to end up with a shortfall.
We're set on the number that we have right now. It's been approved by the BBWAX board, the total number of 7800 radios, both handheld and mobile, that number is set. To have any increase in that has to be approved by the board.
But we have a shortfall in that number, so I'm just trying to make sure.
But it wasn't Mr. Lilly's fault, it wasn't a shortfall.
Okay.
The 57 radios that were installed in the vehicles, were those planned for?
Yes.
In addition to the handheld radios?
Yes. As a part of this whole process, as we're going forward to become a part of BBWAX, we looked at what our needs were for both the law enforcement and fire departments to be able to get on this system. So yes, those numbers were planned for in the initial stages.
In the initial stages, we talked about handhelds, which are standalone, like he held-up items, they don't attach to a truck.
Right.
I don't recall hearing about radios that were going to be installed.
Again, when we first started planning out, building out this BBWAX system, we looked at all the needs, including vehicles, how many handhelds we would need, how many vehicle radios we would need, and also, that was a part of the discussions that we had with the BBWAX board, as we were going forward and negotiating what the overall membership cost would be for the total number of radios the county would have on BBWAX.
Did you ever have that discussion here, doing budget hearings? We talked about mounting radios.
No, no. Again, this is strictly for the membership fee to have the radios, you know, to be able to have them on the BBWAX system.
But we never talked about the installation?
No, ma'am.
And I think that's why we're looking for $32,000 today.
But I just needed clarity on how we got here.
I'm just a little bit confused on, maybe it was oversight on our part, but if the vehicle radios were in the discussion, where did, how did we overlook the installation portion?
Because they weren't ever discussed.
Yeah.
One other question I had, I noticed that Navasota's fire department is not on the list.
No, they're separate. They're actually an associate member of the BBWAX. So their count, the number, eventually those radios will be added to ours.
So we will take care of their fees?
No, they'll still pay their fees, but we are a full member in the BBWAX, whereas they're an associate member, so as a part of becoming an associate member, the radios that they have now will come under our umbrella, but they will cover the cost of, you know, I'm not sure how that's going to work, you know, agreement between the city of Navasota and the county, but the city of Navasota pays their membership fees and will continue to do so.
Well, is that fair?
What do you mean?
I mean, we're paying for every other volunteer fire department, but Navasota's having to offset their expense.
Navasota's not a volunteer fire department?
They're in the association.
They're municipal.
And it's not just the fire department, it's also the police department. And I believe they have some of their public service, public works, trucks also equipped.
I mean, there's a separate, you know, local agreement that y'all have looked at already, between the county and Navasota, the handled up fees for the radio. So basically, y'all charge, pass through through the county, and then Navasota reimburses the fees on the radios.
Okay, well, I'd like to learn more about it. It's in a local, you said?
Yes.
With the fire department?
With the city of Navasota.
With the city of Navasota. So we have, just to wrap it up some, we have four departments that still need their radios installed. And so the item we're dealing with today is to make sure those other four departments are not overlooked in only installation, that the installation would be covered, because we've already installed four other departments?
And that 32,000 for the four estimated amounts, that was probably on the high side. That was an estimate from Texas Communications. It could possibly come lower than that. They won't know until they actually go through the process of doing the installations of them.
Okay, so...
So that's why I had on here, not to exceed.
But the first four on the list, those have been installed, have those been paid for?
Did we actually, I processed the bills.
So where were they paid from?
Out of his special projects line. Which is 408-605.
Because like I said, at the time, I thought that 40,000 was pretty clear to be able to use for that.
And you had not talked with the auditors prior to...
One of the questions you had raised at the previous meeting, Commissioner, as to whether or not, I think it was either at the meeting, or maybe a subsequent phone call, but we discussed this, whether or not this constitutes an emergency. Again, from the standpoint of how the term emergency is defined, like a natural disaster or whatever, no. But in terms of being prepared for and giving our fire departments the capability of responding to real-world emergencies, which they do almost on a daily, they're always on-call on a daily basis and respond regularly to emergencies, I would say that this does meet the intent of that definition, if not the literal definition of emergency.
Well, I want to say while we really appreciate that our first responders are out there responding to our call, I would not want to see the other fire departments left without their radios. And I know that you're working very hard to overcome the problem with hearing, you know, everybody receiving communications if we're going to do this project or move forward with the rest of the project. And you feel for sure that all of the departments will be able to hear on this system?
Assuming the equipment is functional, yes. And all the equipment that we're receiving has already been vetted by the BBCOG, again, Thomas Gilbert has checked the equipment. When we receive it, it is functional. Again, there may be issues with some of these, because they are older equipment, you know, but at this time, as they're being installed, they are all functional and able to be used the way they're intended.
Court? I want to remind y'all that we do not get paged out on this system. Our primary system is our VHF system. Our pagers open up on the VHF system. This system only allows us to talk to other counties. So our initial wake-you-up-in-the-middle-of-the-night pager is on VHF.
Which is what we've been working on?
Which is what we've been working on for the past, whatever, how many years?
Budget before last.
Right, for years. There's a capacity within the system to add a patch to it. That's another layer within the system, to take that 700, 800 frequency down to a VHF frequency to do the alerting. I have no idea what that costs, and I have no idea what the ramifications of it are. But in larger departments, in larger areas in California, where you're talking about thousands of radios covering thousands of square miles, they do the patch, because a lot of the volunteer departments can't afford to have 7800 radio. Montgomery County does the patch in their command vehicle. When the command vehicle shows up on scene, my VHF radio comes through their trunk radio. So when that Montgomery County fire commander shows up on scene, my VHF radio just become a trunk radio at that scene.
So they are able to trunk then?
They are able to swap it over.
They're able to patch.
Okay, through the patch, because they have a patch over Montgomery County.
I believe Brassell County does, too.
So if you're out fighting a fire, are you communicating VHF or 7800?
We communicate VHF on the fire ground. If we have to talk to the dispatcher, or we have to ask for assistance from some other entity, we use a 7800 radio. That's why we have the portable radio, so we have it on our person on the scene. There's also one in each vehicle. And the reason is because not every person who drives the truck has a portable radio, and you may need to contact them either in Route 2, from, or between scenes, and give them instructions for staging, for routing, for dump locations, and you will do it on the 7800 radio, because it's a clearer channel, and it's a dedicated frequency. Once you get that authorization to talk, you are guaranteed that nobody else is going to walk on you. That communication goes through. That's one of the benefits of it.
And it's a closed communication?
Closed as in encrypted?
Yes.
No, it's not encrypted.
There are some channels that are encrypted.
Yes. We have, in the task force, we have encrypted channels for that reason.
So just for clarity, David, you've spent $12,614.07 on the 1234 stations that have had the radios installed into their vehicles? And best we know from the auditors department, those have been paid, that 12,000 has been paid out of some account somewhere?
408-605 is where it's being paid out of.
It's being paid out of, being paid or has been paid?
Well, he has other invoices you're holding, correct, Dave? You submitted those even though we talked about...
Well, actually, I take it back. I do have white balls.
Yeah, I don't think that has been paid, right.
The three that I turned in was for Richards, Shiro, and Fightersville.
Right.
So of the 32,000, 12,000, let me round the numbers, out of the 32,000, 12,600's been covered, you still need 18,450?
Yes, well, actually, we need all of it, because the other part is a deficit in my budget now.
Okay.
But Judge, and just as we're doing on one of the consent agenda items today for 728765, that was to cover getting the electrical to the Vidas thing.
Right.
And it was originally set no more than 32,000, or 22,000.
22,000, yes ma'am.
So since that came in as such a less amount, I would rather wait until we get the invoices on all of this, tally it up, and see what we really need to move over before we actually do a budget.
And it might be far, somewhat less than what we're looking at this morning?
Yeah, possibly.
So then the question is, how long would it take you to get?
No, 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 no. You can approve the agenda item, we just won't prepare the budget amendment until he's complete, if that's what y'all approve, because he still needs authorization whether or not he can continue out with the rest at home and how to go about that.
Right.
And also, you talked about the 22 in a conversation we had, but what I keep hearing is the 145, which was what was in his budget, and this year we put the 40 in there to finish paying for the microwaves, which is what he thought he had, that he was going to cover the installment of the radios.
Or VHF.
So I don't understand the 22 when you talk about the 22.
That was on a different agenda. That was, y'all approved that back in October. Basically, he came to court, it was an agenda item, I think, October 28, and said that in order to complete his grant or to start on his grant, he has to provide power to that Vidas Tower. And it was not to exceed 22,000. Y'all approved that, but I didn't prepare a budget amendment.
Okay.
And so we waited, and he just now turned in the invoice and it was...
And that is the budget amendment?
And that's the budget amendment. So instead of 22,000, it was only 7,000. Which could potentially happen in this same situation, because he hadn't finished it out. So it could come in less or more, I mean...
Okay, but there's potentially 15,000 in that that could be available for this?
Yeah.
No, we didn't, we only did the budget amendment for the 728765 with the actual expense.
Got you. So ended up, you never really committed the full 22,000, is what you're saying?
And so what you're needing today is the 32?
But on the same terms of actually...
But you're waiting to...
If you approve it, then he can go ahead and finish out what he's doing, and then once the project is complete, then it'll come back on the agenda as just a budget amendment.
With a precise amount of how much each of those additional departments calls?
So to summarize this morning, then, what we need is, we need an agreement to allow you to continue installing for the rest of the volunteer fire departments, and find out what that total number is, so that we can then approve an amount. What happens, what happens if we get to that end, and we don't approve the amount?
Well, then we have four departments that won't have radios installed.
Well, my point is, they'd already be installed, because you know how much the money is.
Do you approve that he finished installing the radios?
Right.
Is the question.
So I guess that's a question today, sir?
With a not to exceed price of 32,000?
Right.
But I think it's, I mean, I believe at least the information that I have as far as the agreement is concerned, the addendum places the burden of maintenance and replacement, correct me if I'm wrong, on the fire departments.
The proposed one?
Yes.
That's right.
You have a hand raised.
Are you through, Commissioner?
Yeah, for the time being, yes.
Yes, sir.
It's our understanding at the outset of this, that neither the maintenance, replacement, or repair, any of the radios that are under our care are the department's responsibility. When we started down this road, all we asked for was an upgrade to the VHF system with repeaters to improve the fire ground communications and the communications with dispatch. As it progressed, we were given the 7800 option, and we were told, it's not going to cost you anything, we're going to get them in your trucks, we'll provide them to your departments, and subscription fees, maintenance, repair, it's going to be the responsibility of the county. Begrudgingly, and I can say this with confidence that court will agree with me, we were very, very hesitant for this to occur. We made sure that when the people came to install the radios, that they had their insurance contract with them, because we don't, we're not going to provide liability for them working in our fire stations. We let this occur. We are not going to take responsibility for maintenance, repair, or replacement of the radios. They will be on your desk next Wednesday if this happens. We did not ask for this.
You were approached...
We were told this is going to happen, and it won't cost you anything.
Were you told by this court?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. But believe me, if we're going to be responsible for maintaining these radios and the repair of these radios, they will be on your desk next Wednesday. We are not going to pay for it. And that's the position that our department has.
So, that's White Hall?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's White Hall, and I thought I heard him say Richards?
I'll stick with that because I have no way I can afford these radios. I'd date all that right now. I have to say a lot of things.
And that was the initial discussion, if I recall, a couple of years ago, that you all could not afford 700, 800 radios when you asked for the VHF system to be upgraded because that's what you work with, mainly. For all of your firemen to have is radios, and they can all hear.
The VHF frequency is mandated by the National Fire Protection Association as the primary radio communication system for the fire service nationwide. And the reason is, it's very simple. It's acceptable everywhere, and it doesn't require any subscription to a service. They are standalone radios. And if you buy them, you can, you can actually program your own radios to any frequency you want, receive and transmit.
These have to go back to BVWAX to be?
To be reprogrammed. All the radios?
And inspected annually? Did I hear someone say?
This radio is the second generation for the 700, 800 radio. It went out of service in the fire service a little after I retired, 14, 15 years ago. They're up to the sixth generation. We have done away with, we did away with this radio when the Texas Task Force One originally formed. We went to the Generation Two radio. So, this radio here is 15, 15 to 17 years old or more. That y'all are paying for.
So, what does that leave us? I mean, if we put these radios in vehicles and they need maintenance, we're also going to be on the hook for that, it sounds like. If, I mean, I don't know what the other departments are going to do, but we don't have any, anything in writing as been, you know, historically. I think that there have been agreements with specific elements attached in an addendum that's an agreement between the county and the, and the fire departments. And everything in there is mutually agreed upon. And now, we have radios that, it's my understanding, they're classified as county property, that are in there, and we don't have any element of that agreement dictating the terms of that.
Well, I think you and I are going to have to go on the experience of the remaining members of the court because we weren't here a couple of years ago.
Right.
Any comments or thoughts or recollection or?
Well, like I said, on the 23rd, if this issue had been raised then about putting radios in the truck prior to the installation, we could have had this discussion with the fire departments as to whether or not they wanted them in their trucks. But we're, they started this conversation in January of 2018 with our county representative. And I didn't hear anything about it during the budget process, that we were installing equipment on trucks. So, apparently, he got an okay from someone. Was it the call?
To install the radios? No.
Okay.
So, that's, that's, it's no history there because it was never, ever raised. We talked about VHS handheld apparatus.
Now, I will say that the fact that we did discuss how many radios, and I did get a number, ma'am, I reached out to Thomas, sent him a text message. Total number of radios that we have currently on BVWAX is 208. That's all the radios in the county handheld.
But we don't all pay for them out of 424, right? Because some are in the sheriff's department?
The membership fee, yes. That, that membership fee covers the 208 radios total.
So, that BVWAX, uh, system money covers your department too?
There must be maintenance.
There must be maintenance.
The system's like the, the radio.
Just like the subscription.
Yes, but there is a cost per radio for the subscription. So, I'm trying to get, how many radios are we paying for at $30 apiece?
208.
Okay, 208. And that covers our constables too, okay. So, this is money that would need to go in the budget every year because that's going to be a shortfall if we're covering 208 radios.
Well, we had the subscription fee, the user fee in the budget.
Yes, sir. And again, you know, the, that number includes the mobiles that were intended for the fire departments. So, obviously, you know, again, I did not have any authority to go forward and say, yes, let's go ahead and make this happen. But it was implied by the fact that we had those radios set aside for the fire departments based on how many vehicles they had, how many apparatus they had, that they said that they would need a radio in.
So, I'll ask the two chiefs.
Yes, sir.
Set money aside. Having a 700, 800 radios installed in your vehicles, is that a positive addition to citizen safety, yes or no?
Yes, yes.
So, we, we need to figure out if we're going to provide that for the citizens of the county, how we're going to pay for it. And the question today is, we need 32,000, not to exceed $32,000 to cover the installation of the vehicles for the volunteer fire departments.
Yes, sir.
Then the issue will then come up, at least with two of the fire departments, on any repair or maintenance to individual radios, either fixed or portable. If they're not willing to accept that, we're going to have to come up with some type of budget number to cover that cost.
Yes, sir.
So, the question before us this morning is consider and take action to approve a budget amendment to cover payments not to exceed a total of $32,000 to Texas Communications for the installation of mobile radios in Anderson, Chiro, Plantersville, Richards, White Hall, Iola, B-Dies, and Todd Mission Fire Departments. So, do we as a court want to finish the installation of these and then as a court figure out where we're going to get the money to pay for it for at least this year? You listed Chiro in there, but they're already installed. I understand they're installed and they're paid for, but from what I understand in our conversation, that's got to, that money has to come from another line somewhere. That would be the case for Chiro, Richards, and Plantersville. White Hall is the invoice that's still installed but not unpaid. And then, we've got four other departments, Anderson, B-Dies, Iola, and Todd Mission
So, although we're considering, um, the installation of these radios, at some point, we have to talk with the fire departments. Is, are we coming back to the table to do that?
I would think we would have to. I don't want those radios on my desk.
In, in the past, the conversations have been with the association to see if there's a consensus about how the departments feel about a particular issue. I would suggest that we start there or that the court start with that conversation. I don't know how you approve installing, and it raises the question of the radios that have already been installed. But from the moment that it's installed, no one knows who owns it, who's going to repair it, who's going to maintain it, how long it's going to be there, when it gets replaced. And then, Chief Deputy Green brings up the issue of, we don't know how long these are going to last, and I haven't heard anybody ask that question, but if they have a lifespan of, left, let's say, of a year before they'll need to be replaced, the question then is, you spend 32,000 today and then in a very short period of time, spend money for the removal, installation of a new radio. Is there a bracket that holds all radios? I mean, I think you've got a lot of questions left before you go committing the dollars that need to be resolved for everybody's benefit.
And from my understanding, you mentioned a bracket. Is it a bracket or are we, are we cutting holes in your vehicles?
You're cutting holes in panels in the dash or in the service console of the truck to install the truck, to install the radio, much like you would cut a hole in the dashboard of your '57 Chevy truck to put in an AM radio.
So, I'm, I'm of the opinion that we owe Texas Communications for the work that's been done, but we really need to get an understanding from the fire departments before any more work is done. I mean...
I would concur that we need to have an agreement of, of how we're going to handle it.
Yeah.
But we do have a commitment to date of $12,614.07.
Actually, it's more than that because again...
It's 15,000 is what it's showing. So, I, you submitted the White Hall invoice, I haven't seen it, but your deficit on budget analysis that you guys have is about 15,000.
The 15,000 was 8,000 and something from something else, uh, on the 23rd, 19 was, is when I saw it. It was 8,000. And then, with the 72 that we approved today, those two came to the 15,000. So, those are still, unless that eight is the radios?
Let me go pull the GL.
Okay, then that's still not the radios.
Yeah.
That eight may be the radios because in talking with, uh, Talia, she thought that that was, um, part of the special projects when those, when those two invoices were paid.
Yeah, some of the, actually, I believe it was the first...
First two.
First two or three, I believe, actually. Because again, they started with, they started with Plantersville, and they did Richards.
And that would come up to about, well, that's more than 8,000, so.
And then, they did, did they do Chiro first, Chief, before they came to you?
Uh, they did Chiro before us. We were the last, last one on that list. I don't know what the order was.
Like I said, there were four departments that have been completed and then four that are still pending. So, the first four that are on the list there, those costs are hard costs. Those are actually what was invoiced.
And that's $12,614.07.
So, those four departments, that's what it shows?
No, he hadn't invoiced White Hall yet. I mean, they haven't paid that anymore.
And so, they have. I'm just saying those four departments total, $12,614.
Okay. I'm trying to get to the eight number. That, on the, on the line item that she's referring to on the special projects, there was already a deficit of 8,000, $80.51.
That actually was, and of course, Mary, you can talk this better than I can because I'm not an expert on that, obviously. But that amount was the deficit based on what was left in that line item for special projects that could cover those 12, the total of 12,000 and so on. There wasn't enough to cover all of it, so the deficit was the 8,000. It doesn't relate to a specific invoice in and of itself. It just shows how much was not available in that line item to cover those, those invoices that were turned in.
So, the three?
He was paid 9,000.
Yes. 9,095 is the...
So, if it weren't for that 8,000, that line item would be zeroed out.
Okay. So, it only accepted about, you only had a remaining amount of about $1,000?
Uh, about 3,000, I want to say, out of 12,000 total.
Not if you were at a deficit of 8,000, uh, from 9,095.
Again, I don't, I don't remember the specific amounts, but that 8,000 is the deficit that, that was not available in that line item to cover the invoices that were turned in.
So, that would have been a difference of $1,014.83.
Mr. Ledwood, I'm going to ask you to just stand by. We're going to put a hold on this while we're waiting for Jesse to come back, and we will go to Agenda Item Number 10 to move this along. Agenda Item Number 10, discuss and take action to approve contract for financial advisory services with U.S. Capital Advisors and authorize the county judge's signatory, see attachment number 10. And number 10 is a contract, as it says, U.S. Capital Advisors. And as we move forward on our discussion and planning of the New Courthouse Center, Law Center, we need to, uh, make some decisions as we're making a decision with the architect and potential builders and all that. We're also going to need to have some financial assistance in this project. All of you have seen the contract. John C., have you seen the contract?
I have. I have a couple of, um, they're primarily non-substantive questions, but I would raise for the first question, essentially, you, you have any concerns about going through competitive bid process or, as you did before, RFQs or RFPs and interviewing various folks? I know, um, this gentleman has been here and I think committed to assisting the county, but of course, you recognize it's for a percentage of what the loan is. And so, there's a significant amount of money that's on the line. So, while I appreciate his attendance, those folks are, you know, they're looking at bottom line.
Right.
And so, the question for you all is, do you pull the trigger on one versus considering multiple firms? Have you already done that yourself? Do you want to do that as a court? I think you've got to cross that threshold before we worry about the contents of this particular agreement.
Well, I asked for this contract to be, or for this company to submit this contract to get the conversation started.
I understand.
Uh, and I have no preference at this point other than this company has been with us, I guess, for how long? The last year or six years? Six years? Okay. You started before my time. You, you've been engaged with me through my term, which is...
He was a teenager when he started.
Okay. And I probably had hair when he started working with y'all. But I, I know that there's a process for us to go through, but I wanted to put this on the agenda so we start the conversation. I know that Commissioner Mallett, along with Commissioner Cox, are working with the Building Committee to move that process along. I'm totally convinced in my mind that we need to keep this project moving. I know we as a county have been talking about it since at least 2007 and maybe even before that. So, I had it before us whether we would approve it or not, or at least get guidance from council as to what our next step probably ought to be. Correct me if I'm wrong on my tabulations. If you look at under B, compensation expense reimbursements, uh, the first million of the project is a $2,000, excuse me, is a 2%, which is a $20,000. The next million is a 1%, which is 10,000, which takes it to 30,000. And then, let's say we as a county, uh, so those amounts are 30,000, and then the third million is .075, which would then be another 7,500. So, if you put those together, if we borrowed $3 million from your company, that would be $37,500. Is that correct? And then, if we needed a total of $6 million, then that would be 52,500. That does throw us over the $50,000 bid threshold, and I don't know, John, if that's, I'm not sure how that works when it comes to the $50,000 bid. bid.
Right. I don't know if this falls within professional services to do an RFQ. And I don't recall off the top of my head, and Ben may be able to tell us, but I don't recall, top of my head, a discretionary exemption for this particular service. So, if there's not either, if they're not, neither of those exist, you potentially have to address the issue in competitive bid. And you said borrow from his company. He just provides, his company just provides advisory services.
But I'm talking about his, the fees for his company for us to borrow the money.
I understand. I just want to be sure I wasn't confused.
I don't think he carries that kind of cash around, so. But I just wanted to double check my numbers on the fees, that the first $3 million would be $37,500. And then if you went for another $3 million, that's not a finite number. It's just another $15,000 for a total of $52,500. Any comments with that, about that, suggestions?
My suggestion is, I don't think we know exactly what we're borrowing or talking about borrowing.
You're correct.
So, it might behoove us to go out for competitive bidding on advisory services because a lot of these services are, you have add-on features. The more we add on or request of them, there's, there's an additional cost.
Understood.
I did have the opportunity to meet Mr. Rosenberg this morning. I had a couple of questions about this that he explained, and it was having to do with the fee structure, which we just went over. But there, there's an Exhibit A that lists services that they provide in addition to what they've already said in the other portion of the agreement. And he, he indicated to me that those services were services that they provide, even though it says upon request and is agreed to, there's not any additional expense for those services.
And that's my understanding also.
And while I certainly appreciate the competitive bid process and we have to do what we have to do, I'll tell you, my interaction with Mr. Rosenberg was pleasant and I felt comfortable walking away after I talked to him.
This is the question I have from, for the county attorney. Under B, compensation and reimbursement, the reasonable expenses directly related to the performance of requested work, but not limited to third-party consultants and vendors hired by financial advisors. So, if I understood the contract correctly, if he had to work with other third-party consultants, there may be fees assessed that we would have to cover. And it says here, hired by financial advisors.
Yes, the, there's a question of what's reimbursable to their company. And the last paragraph on page one says, unless otherwise agreed, the county will reimburse the financial advisor for the following. And you listed one, you know, one of the categories. That's what it says. At this point, essentially, they're suggesting that there will be things that will be reimbursables in addition to the contingent amount or the percentage based upon the loan amount.
And the following paragraph said, compensation to financial advisors does not include counsel fees and expenses, rating fees, insurance premiums, paying agents and escrow charges, underwriting placement agent fees, attorney general fees, and similar costs incurred in connection with the issuer's financing program. Such costs shall be paid directly by the insurer.
Right. And they, they're making clear in their agreement that those are not their services. Those are something that you line up yourself. They may be able to point you in the right direction, but they're not covering any of those costs.
Okay. But the paragraph on the first page at the bottom, and B, said there may be other reasonable fees.
Mr. Rosenberg, can you speak to experiences to what some of those other fees potentially might be or what you see in your practice?
Thanks again for allowing me to be here.
We're going to give you a service award, I guess, for five-year.
I think it was a little flat.
That means we won't give you business for 20 years.
It was a different one for five or 10. Under, let's see, Section B, Item Little B, I guess, is that what you're talking about first? I'm not aware of any other third-party consultants or vendors we would hire without, I mean, you have to get approval to do that with your issued approvals.
But what type of people would that be? When would we do something like that?
Bond counsel would be one.
Well, that's the next paragraph. So, bond counsel, all those other fees, what we've given you estimates for, we try to estimate all those other fees for current bond counsel, rating fees, insurance, any insurance that might be required, paying agent, escrow. All those are included in our, every, every debt service schedule that I've run for you in the past had cost of issuance and underwriting, underwriting fees included as an estimate. And that would all, but they, that's all included there. I'm not sure any other third-party consultant or vendors we've hired without your approval. I have, in my nine and a half years doing this, we've never hired anybody else to do or contract any sub-part of the, of the, of the work. I think it's just in case we agreed to hire somebody.
That would be on our shoulders. But your experience says that you haven't seen anybody else hire additional services that weren't provided by your company?
Other than what it says in the next paragraph, bond counsel, attorney general, paying agent, escrow agents. And you've given the estimates of those fees.
But if we don't, if we don't go out on a bond, we don't need all of that. Is that correct?
If you go issue the debt, you'll have a lot, a lot of those fees will be included.
Say that again, please.
If you go to borrow money, you're going to have fees for most, all of those components. And they would go to a third party other than us.
So, it would go to the bank, basically.
Well, we would, you would go to the attorney, the bond counsel or attorney general or paying agent or escrow fee, insurance agent, if there is insurance, or all those are, would be paid to some other, somebody other than us.
So, if you go back to the last paragraph on page one, started with unless agreed, can you explain that to me?
In Item A, there are some additional expenses that we could bill for. We don't normally do that with key copier and postage and we, I just never seen an itemized bill for that. Just we have, we have the ability, the authority to bill you for that, but I haven't seen us do that in all the years I've done it. So, there's legal contracts that we have the ability to bill you for that, but I haven't seen an itemized bill for postage and...
Phone calls.
Phone calls or travel here to attend meetings.
Right. All to say, Commissioner, that they're just making clear, I think, that their fee, let's call it $50,000, wherever their fee is, doesn't cover postage, doesn't cover phone calls, doesn't cover if you all have to hire a bond counsel, which you will. They don't say anything wrong or bad, and then probably this is standard provision with other companies, just telling you what they do cover with their contingency and what they don't cover. You, you wouldn't have an expectation that your advisor about walking you through the process is also going to cover the bond counsel fees for the drafting of documents that an attorney has to do?
Which is under G, right?
G would cover the bond counsel. You're required to retain a bond counsel. To render an opinion, you're borrowing taxes and money, you have to have a bond lawyer render an opinion that this money is being used for taxing and purpose to opine that the money is borrowing for taxing and purposes. I can't do that. The bond lawyer has to do that. And this is all a professional, a contingent fee, professional services contract. If you don't borrow money, you never have to pay.
So, a question to, to our liaisons. We're looking at potentially borrowing $3 million. Is that what I...
At the most, I believe.
At the most.
Unless costs, you know, go up from what the previous estimates were. And what our current fund balance would be that could go towards that as well, so.
I mean, I think we'll have a greater understanding of that possibly this Friday. We'll have another building committee meeting set up this morning.
But until we actually, actually start into the design, I can get some further estimates to get a better idea. Fine tune that number a little bit, but we really won't know until...
Till you go out for bids.
This goes out for bids.
Yes.
And that's about the time we want to line up, maybe a not to exceed number, and then go from there. Because, because the paperwork still needs to be done, whichever route we're going to take to, to finance that additional amount. And again, my reason, thank you, sir. My reasoning for getting...
Thank you.
A contract in front of us is to have serious conversation to keep this, I don't, I don't want to get a plan decided and then we go out for bids and then that's six or eight or whatever months. And then we start, okay, now that we've decided, how are we going to pay for this? I'd like for all of, I'd like to start having conjoined conversation for the entire project. Well, we, yeah, we need the money before we actually sign a contract for... Oh, I understand, I understand. But I mean, if we, if it's six months before we figure out what it's going to cost us and then we start this process, it might be another 30, 60, 90 days. Whereas when we've decided on our plan and we've got the bids, we can pull the trigger and we can go. That's why I think if we get the paperwork for a not to exceed number of what we would finance and then, you know, we can come up underneath that and then go with it from there. All right. So, if we, Mary, if we went out for bids for other companies to assist like Ben's company does, or at least bid to what Ben's company does, can you initiate that or do we have to initiate that from the court?
You can tell me to initiate it, but what I would like to do first is put out on my auditor list or how other counties handle it when you're looking at not doing a bond election, you're looking at just, you know, doing a $3 million...
A loan.
A loan to pay off within seven years.
You have a tax note versus a certificate of obligation.
And I would like to get some input back from the auditors and...
Can, can you roll that process then?
No.
And then based, based on their input to you, then what would be the next step for you to take?
What would be the next, well, I'll discuss it with y'all, what they said, and then take it from there.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Rosenberg, we're going to table signing your contract, but I want to thank you very much for your input, your assistance thus far, okay? Is that agreeable to the other commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, agenda item number 10 is table for now. We understand that our county auditor is going to go to her list, sir, get some information and help us with the process of determining who is going to help us as on the financial advisory services. Let's go back to agenda item number nine. I think Jessica is informed.
Yes.
And she's informing Mr. Lilly at the same time?
Yes.
All right. Do y'all want to update us with your ideas or thoughts or? We're still looking for money, right, Mr. Lilly?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. The precise amount, again, is based on what you have in front of you for the four departments that already have radios installed that we are, we need to pay Texas Communications for. And I have copies here of the first two invoices. There was a change that Texas Communications informed me about where they overcharged on labor on these two invoices. They're going to, I believe, and I don't have the Whitehall one in front of me, but I believe they actually restored that on the Whitehall one or deducted that overcharge on the Whitehall one. But again, the amount that you have in front of you for Whitehall is correct.
Okay.
So, I believe that reflects the decrease in the labor charges that were overcharged on the first two invoices for Richards and for Plannersville.
Can you give us those numbers?
The overcharged numbers or the total numbers?
The total.
Total numbers for Plannersville, there's actually two separate charges. One was for $3,1870 and $460318. The amount for Richards was $315863.
Was what again?
$315863.
And Shiro's remains the same?
Yes. Shiro's and Whitehall's showing on your list remain the same.
So, that bumps that number up from 32 to about 30, 33 and a half? Is that right? Total amount requested.
Well, I may be, I may be incorrect on then recrediting that amount. Is the amount, what was the amount that you came up with, Jesse, 1508?
No, it's $8,080.
No, no, I mean, the amount that...
Your deficit?
The difference was like...
Of 1562.
Yeah. I remember it was, it was an amount of 1,500 or so that he did quote to me when he said that they had overcharged on labor.
Jesse, what do you have showing for all of the invoices that thus far that have been paid?
That have been paid, it's $8,080.
51.
51.
And that's what was in the line? And then you added the 72?
It gives you the $15,000 deficit, yes.
Now, to that number, we need to add Whitehall, right?
Yes. So, to that $8,000 number you just had from Whitehall down, I believe. I don't have that in front of me. No, because I believe Richards is at top of this list, isn't it?
Shiro and then Richards.
Shiro, Richards, Plannersville, Whitehall. So, just cross out Richards and Plannersville and then add the rest of them to that $8,000.
Total?
Yeah.
Yeah, I rounded up to 32. That's why I said not to exceed.
Mr. Lilly, is it your recommendation, recommendation to proceed with the installation of the four remaining departments or stop?
I would, I'm planning on attending the fire chief's meeting tonight and this will be a subject for discussion, I'm quite sure. And I would like to hold on the remaining four until I have a chance to discuss with those departments, those chiefs. And if there, if there's any chiefs that are not present at tonight's meeting from the four departments that have not received radios installed yet, I will reach out to them and discuss that with them, you know, in private. But I would, I would recommend that we hold off on the remaining installation until they get a chance to weigh in on this.
Okay. And when you get that, Dave, when you get that information back from the chiefs, we may need to get the draft to confirm whatever the agreement is over to the association and ask Joan or whoever to circulate the amendment.
Yes.
And I would say, put the back, when you put it back on the agenda, assuming he's calling back on the... And I would say put the back, when you put it back on the agenda, assuming it's going back on the agenda, it's for approval of the dollars as well as the amendment to the agreement.
Or if you decide to go ahead and approve the payment of the current invoices, that would be the agreement and the remaining amount to be approved for the four departments that have been installed. Does that sound right, Joan?
I, I think it's just a bookkeeping issue is whether you want to do an amendment to cover the dollars that have already been spent to run his account negative. We had those dollars, they were real, they just came from somewhere else. Do you want to approve that amendment to say it's, he can be reimbursed for the dollars that have already been spent? I think that's the question.
Well, I mean, I think we need to, I think we need to pay for the work that's already been performed.
But it's been paid. I mean, it's been, it's not as though we gave them no money. We paid them. It just came from an account that ran negative. It's all bookkeeping, you know, it's a mirage. The dollars are there.
I think, I don't think one of them has been paid. It's on the invoice.
It's on the Whitehall.
Okay, just that one. I got you. I got you. I thought you meant the rest of them. The rest of them that have been paid, they just ran his account negative, but real dollars went to the...
Yeah, right, right. Sorry for confusion.
Got you.
I'll make a motion that we table this issue to allow Mr. Lilly to consult with the other fire departments and get a better idea of the direction that they want to go and review the item to the contract.
Do we need a budget amendment for what we've already paid? Or can it be paid for that Whitehall to, I mean, does that have to happen now or...
No, we can do the budget amendment later.
I second.
Recording Committee, did you all get that amendment? All right. So there's a motion upon the court on Agenda Item Number Nine by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. That, that's the table, right. Thanks for the clarification. Okay. Agenda Item Number Eleven, discuss and take action to approve the process for hiring replacement trainee for the Grimes County Elections Administrator. It's under my name, but she's gone.
No, she's still right there.
No, tax assessor collector's gone. Okay, we did have a meeting of, just to date the court, we did have a meeting of the Elections Administration Board, which is the county judge, Joe Fowth, tax assessor, collector, county clerk, chairman of the Republican Party, chairman of the Democratic Party. And we put together a process. We were not going to do anything until we got the official letter from our current Elections Administrator, Becky Duff. And she submitted her letter to Human Resources. Her, Becky's proposed retirement date is July thirty-first, 2019, which is graciously carrying us through the entire election cycle for the May elections. But that also means that we need to get somebody on board to start learning how the election cycle is done. So what the Election Administrators Board suggested, decided, talked about was, we get the letter, once that's done, we give it to, we get Lucy and Human Resources to post that vacancy. Also had a commitment from county clerk and tax assessor collector that they were going to post the opening on listserv. Vanessa, were you able to do that?
Well, I haven't done it until I got the...
Till we got the okay on it, okay. And it might be the same thing for Mary Ann. But they're going to put it out to the public, I guess, the public political county world, county government world that we have an opening. But have you already run your three-day?
No.
No.
I haven't.
Okay, so once, if we approve this process within the court today, then HR is going to post it for the minimum of three days and she can leave it up for as long as necessary. The idea was that as she gets, as she gets the resumes or people interested in that position, that she would go through, narrow the list down to the top four or five candidates. Hopefully, we get that many candidates. And then the election board would then also go through the interview process, make a recommendation, and then we get it approved, make a hire and move forward.
I have a question.
Did any of that make sense? You have a question?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the resignation letter has been submitted.
Retirement letter.
Retirement, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Do we have to accept a retirement letter at some point?
No. I mean, that's up to an individual. They can retire if they're qualified to retire anytime they want. And even if they put in a letter of resignation because of the laws of the state of Texas, they can quit anytime they want.
I just want to be sure.
That's, that's a fair question. Am I correct on that, HR? Okay. So discuss and take action to approve the process for hiring a replacement trainee for the Grimes County Elections Administrator. I've proposed that, it's just a process, the letter's been submitted, understanding of the court, that we'll, we'll post for a minimum of seventy-two hours. County clerk's going to post it, I'll advise, or if you'll advise Mary Ann...
I will.
...to post it on the listserv. We'll start accumulating, you'll narrow the field down to four or five top applicants. And then we'll do the interview process and make a hire. Now, what I need from the court, though, is that we're talking, what we had said in the Elections Administrator's Board is that we would hire somebody at the clerk rate between now and July thirty-first, August the first. We would then change that person to the Elections Administrator rate. Therefore, we're going to have to have some amount of money to cover this additional employment. Let's say we hired somebody March the first, so we'd need March first, March, April, May, June, July. We're going to need five months of, I believe it's grade-five salary. And I don't remember what the minimum of that is, but we, is it fifteen? We may hire him at the minimum or we may hire him at a higher level in that rate depending on their skills and experience, so. And that's something that would be decided. But as a court, if we're going to get somebody in to start training to be Becky's replacement, at least get their feet wet. I don't know, they might even drown in that period of time. But so...
If we, if we hire at a lower level, though, we will have additional monies out of that salary for two months to pay part of that.
Well, we'll have the additional salary. No, let's see.
It depends on what you start the new one out.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
If it's the same rate or a lower rate than, than what our current administrator is at, right.
And I would wait until we have a hire date. And then we'll figure to the penny what you need for the salary and the load.
But I need the court's approval to, I need the court's approval today that we will figure out where to get the money. Because I don't want to hire somebody and then the auditor tell me that we don't have money that hasn't been approved by the court.
That's come out of your salary, dude.
Ma'am?
That's come out of your salary, dude.
Well, I've already covered that dollar, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, you know, so. So I guess I'll put a motion before the court. And that motion is, is to have permission to move forward with the process and offer employment to a viable candidate based on the discussion we've just had. Second. Is there discussion, further discussion? There's a motion before the court by the county judge, Joe Fowth, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski in regards to Agenda Item Number Eleven. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. That takes us to Agenda Item Number Twelve, consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judges. As signatory, I would recommend we take no action. Is there consensus? No action. Agenda Item Number Thirteen.
I move adjourned.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Thirteen to adjourn by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Walker. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries.